The bridge ain't on our, on the agenda.
Please.
Stand and pledge your right. If I do this.
Pledge your right of the United States of America. And to a equal opportunity for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Row call, Mr. Yocum.
President.
Mr. Crossley.
President.
All here. Approval of the minutes of last month?
Make a motion being approved.
I second it.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the claims in the payroll.
Make a motion be accepted.
I second it.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
Traders report. Yeah, okay. Open issues. Covid nineteen update. Wendy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm sure you gentlemen know that right now the, the Maine County is in the red. Um, the state did call us and we did discuss last week, um, what was causing the, the high numbers and a lot of it is in family circles. So, um, we're seeing when one gets sick, they're all getting sick. Um, we've talked to Dr. Albright and he's aware of it. So right now, our cases are at two seventy-three. The last week from just, from October nineteenth, we've had sixty-five positive cases. And that's just not from our testing site. That's from anyone that's testing or it's a Vermont County resident. If they go to Vigo County and get tested and they're positive, we do know that they, that they are positive. One issue that we're seeing is that people are getting, they're getting positive results and they're getting tested again. Um, the CDC has put out that they do not recommend that they be tested for ninety days. But we are seeing some that are requesting to be tested again. Some employers want negative results, so at that point, we have to test them. So we are not turning anyone away, but that is what the CDC recommends for us. That ninety days after a positive result, they don't want, they don't, they don't suggest they are tested. Flu shots, we have two more clinics with that. And then we are also working on a plan for the covid nineteen vaccine. So we have to have a plan to the state by December first on that for the county. And we're looking at, we will set up clinics at both end of the county. So the north and the south ends will both be vaccinated if they choose to be.
So vaccine will be available after the first year, you think?
That I don't know. We're just sending a plan and then they'll let us know when we'll. It's going to be in three phases. The first phase is we'll go to the hospitals. Um, the second phase is where the health departments are, and then there's a third phase as well. So we're in the second phase. So we won't be ones that will receive it the first phase of their plan.
Okay, the ones that get covid, after they get covid, are they, um, they don't get it again? Or, um, is there any recurrence of that or do we think about, they'll be made?
I don't think at this point they really know. Um, we've had people that, we, we had one individual that her, the, the person's employer wanted test results. We've had five test results positive in a row for that person. So it can linger is my understanding from what Dr. Albright's saying. It's, it's however you shed the virus, but it can stay in your body for, for several days or weeks.
So that means the person that I got down in my garage tested positive. So after his fourteen days is up and he gets tested again, he's positive still, he can come back to work?
If, okay, so they serve a ten day quarantine. If he is fever free for twenty-four hours without medication, they allow them to go back to work. Unless he's, he is showing symptoms still, and some of them do. If they do show symptoms, they have to do an additional ten day isolation.
How many people are in the local hospital or do you know?
That I don't know.
Is that public information if we recall?
I believe the hospital posted on their website.
Any questions, Wendy?
Do you think we're going to stay in the red for another week?
I, I honestly don't know. It's by percentage. So, um, last week when we talked to the health commissioner, uh, anyone, any percentage over fifteen and we were fifteen point zero four. So we were just over the red zone.
How do they come up with that percentage?
It's the cases times, I mean, they have a whole equation that they, I tried to figure it out and cannot figure out how they come up with those numbers. But they have their own equation on the number of people tested, the tests, uh, the tests that are done, and then they come up with a percentage. So we were at fifteen point oh four. Anything over fifteen, they do put in red zone.
So I thought red, wasn't red twenty-five new cases per day per hundred thousand people? So it wouldn't take very many at all to push a county of our size.
Into the red zone.
Into the red zone.
Yeah. And our board is aware of it. We keep them updated weekly, so they are aware of what's going on.
Have you seen an increase in people showing up to be tested or is it about the same or is it?
We definitely have seen an increase in, in testing in our site. And, but they're coming, they're not, they just don't have to be Vermont County residents. They, we've had them coming from Edgar County, Vigo Park, even Fountain. So they, they're not necessarily, um, all of our residents being tested. Now, the number are our residents from, from what we calcu, you know, the two seventy-three, those are our residents. But if they test positive at our site, the other county is notified that they have a positive resident.
Any questions, Wendy? Thank you.
We need an ordinance, uh, referring back to appointments only in four hours.
Do what?
We need an ordinance.
You guys had asked to re-implement the covid restrictions that we had originally put in in the late spring, early summer. So what I did is I went, we had a mask ordinance that we did. We had a, another ordinance that restricted admittance to the courthouse and encouraged office holders to conduct their business only what's essential and by appointment only. And then you also asked for an ordinance moving the CARES Act money, uh, into the general fund. I combined the mask and the restrictive ordinance into one and I added a paragraph in there to move the CARES Act money into the general fund. And I emailed that out to you guys yesterday. If it suits what you want to do, you can sign it. If you want to change it, we can change it.
The CARES Act money would be, you have to go to council, appropriate and all that, correct?
You, you guys asked me to move it into the general fund, so I put a, I put a, a provision there to move it to the general fund.
Is any, uh, so once it goes into general fund, it's, can be spent wherever or is there still restrictions placed on it?
I would think it could be spent in any way that we could spend.
Mark, do you have a comment on that?
The State Board of Accounts guidance, which I think they're up to like their third version of it. Almost every one of them states, once it's in the general fund, it's appropriated like any other account. So it can be spent for whatever you want to spend it on. I've gotten a lot of phone calls from people who think they have the way to spend it. I got nothing to do with that. Amy, uh, the auditor has been dealing with State Board of Accounts to make sure everything we do is done right and legal so that when they're audited, it's done right. And, uh, what John's saying, there's, there's two ways to do it. Is the easiest way move the entire amount, five hundred and two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars right into the general fund. And then at that time, anybody who has a project or whatever can go incorporate it out of there. I do think that we should look at covid expenses upfront, you know, not, uh, throw them into blacktop or something, you know? I mean, it should be used to, to try and make this go away or, or do the best we can.
You also said there was a certain amount of that already that we need to set aside.
And this is everybody, you know, every office, every department in the county has been spending money out of their budgets. And to date, we're at ninety-eight thousand two hundred and ten dollars and eighty-two cents. So, you know, if, if, I look at it as from the, uh, C's point of view. We're almost in November. Do I want to get back to, I don't know what my total amount is, say eighteen thousand dollars that I spent out of my budget? By the end of the year, I probably wouldn't have that spent, so I'd be buying stupid stuff just to spend money. And that's, I think, stupid. So I think we should look at if people want to somehow get the money back in their budget and they have an actual project they need to do. It, just appropriate like everybody else does. It would go to you guys and go to the council.
Do you want to sign that ordinance or?
Yeah, probably.
Motion to allow signing ordinance?
Make a motion to allow.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
After the meeting? Okay, Kevin, you have an update on the bridge force?
Yeah, one twenty-two.
One twenty-two. That's the bridge you're building, Ken?
Yep.
Prepared a piece of proposal, a copy for each one of you. In this package here, I've got the, uh, the justification along with the contract. One thing I want to make a note of is we don't anticipate right of way needed. But in the, uh, fee proposal, we included line items if right of ways needed, we'll need some additional environmental work and right of way services. And so that gives you, uh, at this point, and, uh, when they approve these agreements and whatever you find out you need right of way, they won't, uh, allow supplements. So we put it upfront in this current agreement and it's only going to be used if necessary. So the agreement, um, be eighty percent funded, federal dollars, twenty percent local, just like the, uh, field inspections. And, uh, at this point, then if you're okay with the, uh, fee, the agreement, you don't need to sign it yet, but just get approval. And then, uh, needs to be submitted to Endot for a favorable approval through ERC with Melissa. And I could help her, the process. She has questions. Questions at this point? The money is, um, for the construction fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which would be, uh, July twenty twenty-four. So it won't be a quick design. It'll be over the next four years. And that's, that's when the money is appropriated from Endot.
Two hundred and five years down, four or five years down the road yet.
Right, before you put the construction.
How's that work on the reimbursement?
Uh, the design will be reimbursed at eighty percent as well as the construction.
So we go ahead and submit all billing directly to?
As we bill you for the work, then, uh, we get reimbursed or we get paid and then you submit your, um, payment for reimbursement from Endot.
So it always been, every time you submit an invoice, it'll turn around and give you eighty percent of the bill?
Eighty percent of it is eligible for reimbursement.
So July the tenth to twenty twenty-four would be when you got projected to have a bid on it?
That, that's the first bid date for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So it'd be that, could be that bid date or it could be August, September, October, whatever.
It'll definitely be in twenty twenty-four.
Right. Or it could, could go into early twenty twenty-five. It shouldn't need any tree clearing and things like that. There's a lot of projects that I'm in the, uh, late summer. And then after September thirtieth, I think you can clear trees without having the fat restrictions. I don't, that should be a situation here.
You think the estimates we have will stand line for that long period of time?
We projected or hoped, you know, projected, uh, inflation over the period of time as long as construction prices don't go, you know, skyrocket.
Are they going to shut the whole bridge down or do half of it tie?
Uh, I, I guess something to look at. I mean, it depends on how, how you want to handle the traffic. It does get quite a bit of traffic, doesn't it? Detour would be sixty-three more than likely. If it's a short detour, I'd recommend closing it. Probably be done in, construction would take thirty to, no, not thirty, but about three months. Two and a half to three months.
How long do you say?
About two and a half to three months.
For total completion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's this bridge located?
They're hills, though. Big bridge across the river.
Old sixty-three.
Old sixty-three.
When we do the field inspection, um, we'll, we'll be out there, change regular tech, they call it. I would like to have the, someone from the highway department maybe fly, be a flagman for us. It'd just be like for half a day.
Have you also worked that out as far as the lay down area for the area to be used when, during they're doing their, uh, work on this? Do they need to have extra area down there to park and stuff? And then is that all been, have you, you got that worked out?
All, all the details need to be worked out still, but the project limits, I anticipate maybe no more than a hundred feet off the end of the bridge. And then, uh, there should be enough room to, if the road's going to be closed and detoured, enough room for the contractor to, well, the stages work from, from the roadway. So as far as some of the work services needed, uh, that design, environmental study, and the section one oh six, utility coordination, railroad coordination. That, that's one thing that's kind of, um, because it's over railroad, railroad's going to want to review the, even though we're not doing anything to the railroad, they still want to review the plans. And, uh, so you'll have to enter into a contract with railroad also to, for them to approve the project, review it, approve it.
Railroad coordination, they're going to have someone out there all the time, right? I mean, working.
Uh, yeah, this, this railroad coordination, they've got in our contract. That's for us to help, uh, facilitate the review of the plans with, with railroad. But they usually like to have a flagman out during construction to watch, warn, warn the contractor when a train's coming. And it'll probably be, when the bridge is being painted, they'll have to probably, railroad probably requires some type of netting or something scaffolding to prevent any, thing falling onto their train. No problem with it.
Motion to allow?
I make a motion? That's that good?
Say it.
Come up here in favor.
Say it.
All papers say aye.
Aye.
You can one sign.
At this point, I, I wouldn't sign it. I think we'll have to get Melissa to submit it to Endot or get their approval and then, then after that. Thank you. In case they, on any revisions or.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Marine rise. Go here, okay. Uh, VTA, Tom?
So I can, uh, Jeff Mahalik of Mossio Properties brought his group out on, uh, September the twenty-sixth and, uh, they did a lot of work on, they finished up work on the, uh, pavilion. Uh, and, and then they also brought equipment and stuff and did, uh, tire removal and stacking and all that. And Les went through after that and smoothed down the, the trail after that. So, yeah, they did, they, they had a, a large, several people there and, and a lot got done that day. So, and Becky Holbert is working with the park board to get signage that's consistent with all, with the rest of the park. And what she's told us is the whole park system is working on their signage and they want it to be all, you know, consistent through the county. So that is going on. So I mean, at this point, you know, I guess people, if they want to go out and have a walk, you know, I, it, it's, uh, a place to go, so.
So it is open to?
Well, that's kind of up to you guys. I think earlier in the year, I think there was a statement made, you know, from the, from your meeting, you know, it says, well, people want to go out there and take a walk. So I mean, it, it's, it's up to, it's up to the commissioners whether or not it's, what officially, I don't know if we've had a ribbon cutting or an official or whatever, but I, I don't know that that's our call to say it's open.
Well, I think that we as commissioners want to know if you guys think, you know, I mean, I mean, you guys did all the work, you know, you know where you're at. And we just, if you, if you all think that, that it's open, then I don't, I don't see no problem here of us making an announcement. But we, we need to know what you guys want to do, what you, what stage you guys are in on that.
And I'd just say that I, my cautionary thing is the signage is not there. That, that is what, uh, that's my hesitation to say, yes, it's open. Uh, because of that, and I think we need to have, you know, the, the things that protect the county and protect the, you know, the cautionary things that need to go, uh, uh, on signage, signage at the, in the pavilion area and at the entry for the trail in order to make people aware of, of, of safety protocols that they could follow and such and, uh.
So probably best to wait till you get to sign each other?
I think it'd be safer. And then the, another issue then is also, do we want to stop people, you know, at the, at the, at the prop, where the county, the county owns all the property up to a certain point around the trail. And then the trail goes on through private property. Do we want to, uh, be cautious, especially during hunting season and say, stop there?
Well, he says private property anyway, so they wouldn't have right to go through it, correct?
Well, you have the people that are hunting there. That, that's my concern is people, people are, uh, the people that own the private property that is beyond the county property, that's what they've got. I, my understanding, that's why they have the property is to hunt there.
Right.
And, and I'm just, I'm, I'm cautious about sending people on a trail through where they hunt. Does that make sense? And so I would, I would.
Sound like the area there needs to be restricted during hunting time.
That would be my opinion, but again, that is, uh, that is more your call than mine. But that's my advice is that we would do, uh, put a stop sign and just say, you know, it's hunting season, you turn around and go back. That, that's my, that's.
John, your thoughts on that?
Well, it's up to you guys. Um, I, I think it's a good idea to put a sign up, uh, before it's open to the public. And I think we went over some examples of different signs that, that are in use commonly on walking trails. Uh, as far as closing it during hunting season, that's you guys' decision. Um, if you want to put something out that closes it or even something that warns people, hey, caution, hunting season, uh, it, it wouldn't hurt.
And, and then, and then there's the, the part that's within the county property. And, and I guess, as, as you have said, there's nobody that has permission to hunt on that. Does that mean nobody's item of people?
I, I was going to point out.
Not supposed to be, right?
We, we get sued for everything.
Yeah.
We get sued for the negligent design of state roads. We get sued for not supervising agencies that aren't under our control. We're putting the signs up to help us if we get sued. You can put a sign up that says caution, hunting season and trails closed at night or whatever, and somebody can still trespass down the trail, fall because they're drunk and turn around and sue us and we stop to defend it. We're, we're just, we're just helping that defense by putting some signs up.
Randy, you got a question?
Yeah, I, I think it's a very good project that they're doing there. The only question I would have is if it's not officially open, we're the liability fault. I mean, I, I think it'd be great if we could make it day officially open, what we've got done so far. So that the county then at that point would assess the liability because we're okay. But from someone just arbitrarily go on there, I think presents a, a risk.
I make a recommendation to stay closed until they're ready to open it.
Okay.
And that be, be safe.
That's the guidance we need. Thank you.
IT update, Nate?
Okay, so, um, we're, we're going to launch a trading campaign with the know before, um, as part of the IT update. So basically, it's a thirteen minute video that is going to train users how to detect spam or phishing scams in the email. It's, uh, like I said, it's a thirteen minute video. We're going to give them a month to get it done. And, um, just to, to give you guys kind of an idea of what we're looking at. So forty-five, so we've sent out a baseline test and forty-five percent of users failed that test. So, um, at this point, we're going to start the training, um, and see how that goes.
Forty-five, the people here's?
Forty-five percent of the people with county email address failed the, the test.
Correct.
So, um, with that said, it, it's time to, to start training and, um, use the product that we've purchased. So, um, I think the email is set up to go out tomorrow night at five. And you'll see it, it'll come from infotech@VermillionCounty. And it's just going to give you a, a web link to follow to the video. Um, and then we're going to do that, so that's, that's something that we're going to do quarterly. Um, you'll, you'll have one testing module per quarter. And then behind that, you're going to have scam in parentheses emails come in. And if you click, you're going to be required to watch a video, uh, for clicking, um, based out of that. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that that's coming. Um, Amy's going to send out an email letting all the users know, um, that, not to delete the email, to actually read it and do what it says. So that way we're covered.
How much filtering is on that? Is there any type of filtering on that or as far as usage or is there any, any safe?
Um, so you guys, you guys use Gmail. Gmail has one of the best spam filters, period. Um, so there's that. Um, and then a lot of it, so when I say spam emails, a lot of them are legitimate emails that somebody has either sent out, uh, somebody's, somebody, somebody else's email had been hacked and sent out, um, just a massive amount of just garbage. Um, and that's where the danger comes in, is people clicking on, uh, links they don't recognize or opening something that they don't recognize. You know, I, I've had multiple calls here with people, um, they. You know, I, I've had multiple calls here with people, um, they get an email from somebody they recognize, but the text of the email seems off, and those are the ones you really have to strongly caution, because if, if you, if you don't know the person sent it, call them, send them an email replying, say, hey, you know, is this for real? It takes twenty seconds to, to just reply and say, hey, is this legitimate? Um, if it's a fake email, a lot of times it'll bounce and it'll just tell you, uh, sender recipient, uh, not available or server rejected. Um, but, um, training, training is the way to, to reprint that and get people ready for all that.
How are we set up now compared to, you know, all the hacking that was going on and holding hostages and stuff as far as for, you know, payment and stuff? How are we set up now as far as protection to get against?
Um, I mean, you've got, you've got a security device, um, and then you have the web filter that the county has purchased, and then you have an additional, um, filter that the state has purchased. Um, so, I mean, you're behind three layers of security, so really pretty good. And then if they have any questions, you know, have them feel free to come find me or shoot me an email.
How far along are you on all the computers and everything? Are you there, just about done?
Um, all the computers are deployed. Um, I have one server that I'm waiting on CSI to get back with me. Um, and that's for the third floor, the, the criminal system. Uh, as far as, everything else is pretty much done. Um, the, the, the email training is the last part of what's going on, so. Um, that's all taken care of at this point. And then for the phones update, um, health department is the twenty-ninth, and soil and water is November second. And then those are all done and taken care of.
And what's the backup system on the, on the phones if, in case we lose phone service in here?
We're working to get a secondary provider in. Um, I'm trying to get answers back from ISPs. So for right now, the backup system is download the app on your cell phone, and you can make courthouse calls from your cell phone, and you can receive courthouse calls to your cell phone with your number protected, just like you're answering at your desk.
You have a question?
Anybody else out here?
You out here with the phone issue?
I'm sorry?
The phone system?
Yeah, that's, that's what I just.
That's all, I mean, I'm.
That's it.
Okay. Jail, jail renovations. What team you talking about that?
We got a, uh, projected cost for the engineering work on jail and a projected cost of the jail itself. Uh, the cost of the work has been established for fourteen million, four hundred seventy-six dollars, four hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, two hundred sixty-one. And that does not include the water line and, and addition that we're trying to get in, put in for the rise, which will make portable water to the jail, and I think that's another, about a hundred fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that is, is separate, not included in this. Um, engineering fees, uh, runs about five point five percent of the cost of the work, and that's going to be about seven hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for engineering work. So, we're at that stage now, we're going to have to go back to the council for more funding. To fund a part of the engineering side. There's copies if there's anybody wants to see it after a while. Which that comes under, quite a bit under the projected cost earlier that was at. Also, we, in our jail meeting the other day, we brought it up that, uh, to have a point of contact. Those commissioners for this jail project. And, uh, Tim Los Wilson was there, and he heard the same thing, that we need to appoint one of us as the point of contact. Maybe someone that can report back to the other commissioners in the board what's going on. Tim said he'd be willing to do that. I can, just want to, want to make it official so we know, it's not to make decisions, it'd be the point that, what, I could get the information, call you guys, and we can make decisions that way. So.
I recommend.
Anybody got any questions on that? Have all the answers, but. We're moving along on this jail. Project is going to happen, so. We're looking at, I think we talked, we're looking at a, probably a April, May of next year for probably a bid, a bid will go out, and within twenty-four months, the project will be done. So, we're looking at two thousand twenty-one in the spring bid, we're looking at two thousand twenty-three roughly spring or summer completion date, so, believe it or not, you guys do have a, some dates out there now, you can start saying it's going to happen, but but we're moving along with it. I think we had, we had a meeting the other day, and Tim was there.
Very protective meeting.
You what?
We had a very protective meeting.
We had a real good meeting, uh, everybody got together, and, and Sheriff Phelps was there, and it was, it was good, everybody got asked questions. And I think a lot of the things that, uh, to make this project work is, is people working together, and it, and it really turned out really good. I, what do you think, Mike? It was a good meeting, right? Very good meeting. So we're going to move forward on this, and if you have any questions, you can get ahold of me or, or whatever, but, uh, it's time we move on this project, and we will, so.
Okay. John, what on the handbook, what was it?
Uh, there's a part that I just, I, I need to get on. Uh, the last couple of weeks, we've ironed out, uh, how to handle holiday pay for, uh, the sheriff's office where there's a non-traditional work schedule. And then, I don't think Anita's here, I don't know if we have Scott Craig's parts that he's working on yet or not, I don't remember.
Okay. Okay, position, ERC, job description, without a hope right now. Leave it on the, the agenda with. On the courthouse grounds, I got Terry, he had to say which, let him be cut back out of the way. And then on public fifty-three law, you only had one application?
I make a, I want to make a motion to go ahead and appoint him to that. Oh, we got.
Joe Ellis, only application? He's having an applied.
Did we have a vote on that, or what we got?
Yeah, should have.
Yeah, you should go ahead and, and, uh, and put it to at least a voice.
Second to vote. Eric, you mean voting, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Joe Ellis had been appointed to the area applying commission, he was the only applicant that, only one sent in applicant, so.
Okay, bridge at West Green Creek, fourteen fifty north, we had to bid for it last, price of the bridge last time. If we get it in by November first, we can secure that price. And then we had a, a labor, price of the labor, but how do we do that now? Build a council for. Get that approval of money for next year. Well, there's no fines for it this year. No. I'm going to go ask the county, get on the agenda for the council, ask at the next meeting.
What was the total cost on that?
You got there? So do you end up getting some labor cost? Have you got, we got a labor cost, put it in there? Hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, cost of the bridge package. And the labor is a hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Walt's here to explain that.
The bridge's seventy-two feet.
Can you explain that, Walt, on the labor, what you got to do? Seventy-two foot bridge. You want to explain on the labor, what they got to do, bring the crane in and?
Hey, that was, that was an estimate that, he, he was going to, uh, put out bids for, for it. And he is, I would say that estimate's probably considerably higher, but he just made, you wanted an estimate of something what it might be, so.
You ain't got to be that high.
You, you won't know till.
You get a bid on.
Look at these specifications.
So you got, you got an estimate for him, just go to funding to try to get the funding ready to?
Do the bridge, yeah.
Okay.
The, the labor, when, when we get ready to let it in, we can advertise what's in, that's just a rough estimate.
Uh, the reason, reason, I, I think the reason he made a high estimate, um, those are heavy, uh, beams that's on the bridge right now, have to be lifted out, you have to get a big crane in there, probably have to get a crane in about three times. It will, you know, add to the cost. And then, of course, there's a little extra cost by using, you got to keep traffic across the bridge while, while it's being put in. Uh, you know, that's, uh, those people are isolated back there, and, uh, it's, uh, it, it's a serious thing to make, make sure that they can get back and forth safely, and that's, that's the main thing.
Maybe you're half at a time. That comes out of a huge bridge, though. Council wouldn't have that do that, would they? Yeah.
That, that's an important bridge because of.
Hey, Kevin, when, when?
Getting, getting, uh, mercy vehicles across the.
This is not going to be an eighty-twenty project.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Kevin, when we, we, we're going to, we're going to have roughly two hundred thousand, right? When will that, we'll be looking at, that needs to be?
So, for the one-twenty-two project? We're talking about?
Yeah, the match money we need for our bridge, for Bridge One-twenty-two.
Um, as far as the match money, I think before it goes to construction, and that requires you to put, put money in escrow to match what the construction costs, but the design, um, probably will start till January next year.
So we, we can lock the cost of the bridge, we get by November first?
I would say if the county had possibility to be able to haul away some of the debris and stuff like that with county vehicles, it might, might, make your cost down. A number of bridges that we put in, the, the county kind of participates and, and, uh, hauls out some of the material and brings in maybe, if there's any material to be brought in, uh, counties can buy it cheaper than the contractors can, so contractors usually give a pretty good, uh, work to work together that way. We do that a lot in Benton County, a lot in Owen and, uh, and Montgomery and around different counties, we do that. They, the counties kind of participate in, and, uh, they, they could offer that in their specification that they would do so much, so. Especially if we change for that if you need to. There's all different ways that you can, you know, maybe adjust your cost of, of installation.
If you want to, uh, use your county trucks and stuff to haul stuff away and haul the gravel and stuff in, you want to put that in the, in the bid spec.
On the labor form?
On the labor part. But right now, I need you to just ask the council the money for the bridge, great? Well, that comes out of a community bridge too. So we know additional then, we just don't want it right now. Ask Melissa back here. I want you to know, community bridge right now, Melissa, you know?
Right now, at the end of the year, there's, there's not enough to do that project, and it probably wouldn't be enough in the budget for next year to do the project. So we would need an additional.
Okay. So I have to go to the council for an additional then? Lock that pricing. If they say no, it's, it's, you know, it's no go then, you just have to wait till money comes in, get the money back in there. That's what I can do.
The main thing is, is the, if the order's signed, that price is good, if the order's signed by November first, doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, turn the order in that quick, as long as we, we have a, a.
Agreement?
They know that it's going to be, it can be built even after the first year.
You put me on the agenda for the council in the next meeting, or, for later for the next meeting? Or the meeting after?
She's probably, it's probably not too late.
Okay, let me know, I'll do that. And I'll get this used, don't lose it. This is on the bridge. All right, I'll do that. Thank you, Walt.
Pardon?
I'll do that, I'll go to the council meeting and ask.
Okay, all right.
Highway capital improvement plan, need an order for the twenty-one, twenty-two, and that's for the, edit money, is that right, Melissa?
What?
You have an order, is that correct?
For the highway cap?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the, that is the money.
Yeah, yeah. So you got, draw one up for us.
Yeah, I think I, I already did it.
Okay. I can double check.
Is that to put purchase on the highway cap?
By the end of the year?
Yeah, we just have to have it done by the end of the year. I've got a rough draft, it should be done, um, any day now.
Okay.
So it should easily be before you guys by the end of the year, yeah.
Okay, uh, twenty-twenty-one bid specs, if there's any changes, if not, we advertise, send out a package. I don't think there'd be any type of, many changes. Okay. And on the, on Judy Payne, Amy doesn't know here, she said she'd like to be here so we could, without the next meeting, she'd appreciate it, discuss that. And, I mean, joint road cut permit, is that the same one that went to Dana? I mean, it's not even ours, it's.
I think that's what we determined last meeting, is that the place that they were looking at wasn't, wasn't intersection of two county.
That, that one in.
Still, that was kept on here because I hadn't heard back from them, but I've heard back from them. Dana told them to contact us, but it really is.
Dana's incorporated cities, so it's your call, yeah.
So, they're taking care of it.
Okay. Okay, on the burn ban, do you think it's been enough rain we can lift it? You think, do you agree it's been enough rain we can lift the burn ban? What do you think?
I think we've fallen enough rain.
Okay. Anyway, that's, but incorporated towns can do what they want, is that?
What do you think, Mark?
I think we're good. I mean, people need to, they need to show what they're dealing with. Some massive fires, a lot of people.
So we'll lift it?
Yeah, go lift them, okay.
Okay.
All papers aye? Okay, moving into new business, we got a vacated alley street, Jeff Kirman?
Yes.
Yes, sir, you want to come forward and tell us what you got?
Wait, am I here?
You have to stand in there. Penny, you've already taken care of that, I mean, help on that.
How you going to do?
Where, where's that, Jeff?
It's, uh, Blanford, Jacksonville, first edition, I believe.
Yeah, and neighbors, everybody's been notified.
What did you say was that?
Yeah, I got, uh, Blanford.
Oh, Blanford, okay.
I've got, uh, receipts here for.
Okay. Anybody here against it? I would say.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's, uh, they're vacating the whole length of it.
Mm-hmm.
It's just I've got the four lots on the south and the north side, and I think the way she wrote that up was, uh, just what board was my property, and the other part I think they're not going to mess with.
Don't hear complaint, against it? Voting to allow? Did he, did he do all the paperwork?
Yeah, I got the receipts for the certified mail to the neighbors and, and then, uh, thing for the, adding the newspaper here.
I'll make a vote to allow. Second, I started.
All papers aye?
So when you get down with that, what, what goes on with this, Penny? Do you take the surveyor and he records this, or does the court record?
The auditor handles it.
The what?
The auditor, they have, they have.
Yeah, but there would have to be some type of, I mean, if you're messing with a public right of way and you're changing it, it should be something in the recorded with the surveyor, right?
What we normally do, Tim, is we require the person who wanted to close that public way to provide us with legal description for the deed that is recorded. That way the county's not involved in creating legal descriptions. Uh, usually it's a person that, that petitions, we want them to provide us with the legal description of what they've closed.
You own both sides alley.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm saying what, what happens with that document after it's done here, does it go? I mean, if we're messing with right of ways, it needs to be entered someplace.
It's gotta be recorded.
Yeah.
It's gotta go to the auditor's office and the recorder's office.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
All right, yeah, do I need any papers for you guys to do?
Need you go to the order officer, go from there.
There you go. Thank you, John.
Okay, uh, twenty-one holiday calendar, all state recommendations plus whatever's been done in the past, which, uh, would be, we add back if the hill climb gets here.
Did you say, did you say twenty-one, there's no elections? So you would have to put the election days on it?
But if the hill climb gets to go again in twenty-one, that day, that probably would be off.
Probably be off.
And, uh, she's left, but then the health department takes the Friday off of the Labor Day weekend during climbing, if they trade anything.
So those will be on there if those events happen?
Yes. And twenty twenty-one appointments, you'll advertise them next week, so we'll do that next month?
We, uh, had a problem there, we dealt with last year, we did deal with last year. That was with the timing on the, uh, the rise board.
Yeah.
Remember we had a problem with that, and you said, well, they went right.
Roughly give them a year, but, but they had court nineteen come up, so you already kinda got, you know, so I don't know where.
So where are we at on that?
Well, we got appointments, we'll have appointments next month on it. We got some more advertising, if you can advertise it.
That's, that's not the question. Last time we went clear on when their terms were up and that was never decided.
It's on here, it's present.
It's on here now?
Yeah.
So I never know, I never knew there was ever a decision made what was right on that.
We got one, two, three, four, is there time, is it twenty, we got one, this is twenty-one, the rest are twenty, December thirty-first, twenty.
What page is you on, anyway?
Four hundred, yeah.
Greenwich.
Newport County, U.S. Authority.
Right here. Next to last page. Mr. Major's appointments, Jack, Tom, and Park.
We just thought about just staggering that board, remember? We had a note, we talked about make stagger the board, they're not all at one time.
So they got, they're showing four of them out of five up then, right?
Right. But if you look over to the right, we talked about staggering him, remember? Sitting all at the same time.
So when was Ren Dacey's, were, were seen at, one of them different and why would one of them be different?
Uh, he, I believe he replaced somebody.
John Major's replaced, uh, uh, Ren Dacey.
Yes.
But still he would be serving out the, the term.
That was, his term then expired.
So he's the only one, be the one left, so we, we probably may want to consider staggering him, like maybe make one-on-one year term, next two-year term, whatever, you know?
So what we got, we got four of them expiring on the same year. That ain't good.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And one of them expired next year, so I think that ought to be looked at because, you know what I'm saying, for, for had that many, could be changed out at one time, could be, could be pretty bad.
John, what's the standard on that on board?
I'll, I'll pull the statute for you for next meeting, but I, I, I think if you guys want to stagger those appointments, that you, we can do in ordinance, do you wanna try to do it so there, there's five people on the board, each one serves a five-year term, so each one's up every year? Or do you want shorter terms? Why, tell me what you guys want and I'll work on it.
I, I think it should be like a five and a three, you know, I mean, a three and a two, like two would come up one year and then three would come up the next time, but as far as having, and I, I still don't understand why you got one after all by theirself. If you had five of them, don't tell me that there's only one board member on there that had an odd term on his, that, this don't look right. We can change that regardless.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why not, I'll, I'll double check the statute for you, but I don't see why we can't.
Cause you got four of them, all of a sudden, one of them is different, it don't.
Yeah. I think it'll be like a three and a two, and right now the terms are three years, right?
Yeah.
If you had a three and two, then when it would come up, it wouldn't be, it makes sense, don't it, not to have?
Yeah, it's just our initial ordinance will have to say, like, some people might get elected for a one-year term or something like that until we get it in sync so that you have three coming up in one year, and two, so you're gonna have them going for a two-year term, basically.
He was, he come on in January of nineteen. Well, why don't you dad had a new one every year? I mean, had it.
I'll, I'll check if you want to do that for new one every year, would you do that too?
That might be a. Check on that, John.
Okay, yeah, just tell me what you wanna do.
Of course you'd have to have more than one, cause you only got three-year terms, so. You're not. So this gonna be advertised?
Yes.
And what, what, they have to have it in by when?
Well, next meeting will be November tenth, is that correct? In two weeks?
We always made appointments, I think, before, at the last meeting of the year.
Yeah, usually done at the last meeting of the year.
So the day, date, they gotta have them in is within two weeks or, another way, make that a little longer, you know?
Well, yeah.
Last meeting, we do it last meeting of the year.
Last meeting of the year, we make appointments.
So won't we have a, have the deadline a week before the next meeting, that last meeting or something?
That'd be fine.
I mean, you know.
That'd be fine, that's plenty of time. People hear about it.
So back to this rise situation, is, is that the way it's gonna be? We're gonna be, have four of them up? Are we gonna change the, the stagger stuff by the next meeting and then?
Well, we gonna have to by next meeting, we can get to the, you didn't figure out how to do it.
Okay, by next meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll answer that, that'll be.
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll email you the statutes probably this afternoon.
We don't have to do it right then.
And you can be thinking about how you wanna do it.
Then you gotta figure out who, who's gonna be on that stagger, you know what I mean, I, it's gonna be, no matter how it's gonna be, it's gonna be good or bad, it don't, you just gotta do it. Okay.
Uh, are we doing anything with A, this document here? We don't sign it, we don't sign the date, do we?
I don't know, I just saw like.
The AIA document, is it gonna be signed now or is that, that's for the design, the design?
I just wanna make sure that we.
You're looking over.
We approved this today, this, what we're doing here and then, next step would be going to the council for funding.
Okay.
You make a motion, I guess.
Yeah, when the motion made, you go to council on that for the funding for the, since they had to look at it.
You make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
My second.
All the papers aye?
Aye.
Aye. You got a copy of this, Jeff?
Yes.
Um, do, I'm just wondering about to send out these board requests, is there any way we could send something out to the people who are currently on there and ask if they even wanna be on it?
Yes.
I, I.
Yeah, there's, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. You can say, hey, send us a letter, let us know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with people being reappointed, but we'd like to know if they even wanna do it.
Yes. You pick your, Jeff?
Yes, I'm gonna fill out right now.
All right.
And then the November edition one is already advertised, so you'll have to get that to the December, to the bridge.
The bridge, so probably won't be able to do it then. Go ahead.
Now, Amy just messaged me that, she said.
Go ahead and put me on the agenda for December and if it changes, if it, if we can't come to the town green all that room.
Okay, and then she said we need to make a motion on the holiday calendar.
You need to change on the holiday calendar, except what we already made, add back, either hill climb.
We gotta take the, gotta take the election day out.
Election day out.
Two days.
I didn't think it was on there.
It may not be. Add back to hill climb and the.
You have it in your package.
Little Italy festival if it's.
The hill climbs add it back on.
Little Italy festival.
Little Italy festival and the election's taken off. This is what you would be approving if you want to get. Exactly what you stated.
What are you doing, Little Italy festival for?
What? Health department took it off, that probably off.
Okay.
Yeah, New Year's Day.
So it's the same as the state, but our two add on.
They sent the two we add on, yeah.
That's good, that's, I made the motion, we.
Accept that?
Accept that.
All the papers aye?
Aye.
Anybody around Thomas and notice over here? Penny?
I still wanna talk about the nine-one-one addresses.
Uh-huh.
Um, on September twenty-ninth, you guys had Derek Williams, who is a nine-one-one minister, come to the meeting about addresses not getting placed on the map. At that point, he'd said that most of them, cause there were forty-seven that weren't on the map at that time, that he had gotten in place except for seven or some, some number, I didn't hear the number. Um, as of last night, there are still sixteen not on the map. And out of those sixteen, seven are new homes, and out of those seven new homes, there are four that people have been living in for more than six months. I have a problem, that these people come to my office and I assign them a temporary address. I'm the face they see, and they're living in their house thinking they have a nine-one-one address on the map. It'll get you close, if it's not on the map, it'll get you in the neighborhood, but it's not gonna show you the house that it's on. So what happens when they have a fire or someone's dying and it takes an extra three minutes, cause they went to, cause you could, I could tell you, it's the house south of Tom Garza's house. The paramedics aren't gonna know where that is, but you and I know where that is. So they go to Dale Compl's house, which is the house on the map that's south of there, you know, they wasted three to five minutes, somebody's dead. I don't like being the person that, I'm getting the phone calls back if my address verified, is my address verified? Um, I emailed Derek the twenty-nineth, the twenty-ninth of September and told him these sixteen still were not on the map. He said he'd have them done. They're still not done. You guys wanna talk about liability, somebody fall on a trail, where's the liability going if somebody's house burns and they're not on the map and they've been assigned a temporary nine-one-one address?
Send us a letter on that and then we can, so we'll take care of it.
I, I, I could send you a letter on it. Tim's been in on the emails back and forth, Mike Phelps has been in the emails between me and Derek. Something needs to be done.
I just, if you're talking to Sheriff's or a left tenant, is he downstairs?
He knows. I mean, I've got three hunting cabins, and hunting cabins, there were a lot of times there were hunting accidents, and these cabins are a hundred thousand dollar cabins, they don't have addresses on them. Um, and ones from fifteen, ones from sixteen, ones from seventeen, five's from nineteen, and eight from twenty, that's not on the map.
You got a new hunting cabin going up northeast, do you know that, don't you?
Yeah, I got two going in, yes.
Up around God's.
Lawless's old property, yes. Been out there already. They have their temporary nine-one-one addresses.
You guys have admonished me to remind you that when we get off the end of the agenda and something like this comes up, to remind you to put it on the agenda for the next meeting so that the person on the other end has a chance to be prepared and come here and give it a response to what's being said.
Put that on agenda for next meeting then? We'll see what I can do for you. Anybody else? Want to picture?
I'll make it.
Good thing it's signed here.
Not a problem. Cause I'm sure he's gonna have.